Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, March 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, that March 25th, 2021 public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. The first agenda item we have tonight is site plan review for 15 Main Street, and that's presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers. I believe Niles Zager.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Niles Zager from Zenith.
Niles, before I let you go, just a formality, I want to call attendance for your planning board. Members present, I have Barbara Mankowski, Peter Conroy, Michelle McCracken, Jack Lynch, and myself present. So we have a full board this evening. And Kathy Murray, the clerk, is present. So turn the floor back over to you, Niles. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll be here before you for a project at 15 Main Street. It's my, the applicant is Bluefin Realty located in Middleborough. So the property is located about two lots south of the CVS Pharmacy on Route 105, and it's located across from Riverside Drive, and it's depicted as Map 6 Block 1, I'm sorry, Block 7 Lot 1B on the assessors' maps. The lot is approximately 3.26 acres with a wetland at the rear of the property, and that wetland is depicted as wetland flat with wetland flags 1 through 10. Actually, is there any way, is there any way we can share the, my screen so I can?
Yeah, go right ahead. We welcome that.
No mind, I appreciate it. I just need, I just need permission.
Yep, go ahead. Talking from Lake Cam?
Yeah, it must be from Lake Cam. As of right now, I don't have it. It says I'm disabled.
Yep, give me one second.
Sorry. I should have asked before. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. Try it now. Perfect.
How's that? Everybody can see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So. Let me just go to the sheet here. Great. So, so the lot is located in both the business district, which is located 600 feet back from Main Street, and also the residential district. This is the zone line here for anybody looking on the plan. So this is all business district here, residential district here, with the wetland at the rear of the property here. The topography of the site, the high point of the site is here, which is elevation approximately 122, and it slopes all the way down to roughly elevation 80 at the rear wetland line, and it's also about approximately elevation 105 on Main Street 105. The approximately 2/3 of the property is cleared here. This is the tree line. So this is all kind of just an overgrown vegetation here with the remainder of the rear of the property all wooded. There are two existing concrete foundations that are in disrepair, located on the property, one here and one here depicted. They're both going to be removed as part of the proposal of this project. Derek, I'll just go through some of the overlay districts. There's no flood zones on the property, no natural heritage endangered species, so there's nothing of that nature. There's no areas of critical environmental concern, A C E C, and the property is definitely not located within O I W outstanding resource water and is not located within the Zone 2 of a public water supply well. So that's kind of the existing conditions of the property. I'm going to go to the, this is the layout, kind of the cleaner plan layout with some landscaping and laying, which I'll go through. The proposed facility depicted here is a three-story self-storage facility, which is a 24,000 square foot gross, 24,000 square foot footprint with a total gross floor area of 72,000 square feet. The parking for the property is all proposed in the front here. There's a total of eight spaces, with one of those spaces being handicap van accessible. There is going to be a small office space here located at the northeast corner of the front portion of the building. The building meets all zoning setbacks in a business district, which are currently depicted as 40 feet on front, rear, and side. So we have in excess of 40 feet on all sides of the building. Landscaping that is proposed is, as of right now, is proposed in the front here. We're, at this point, we're proposing two 10-foot-high plus dogwood trees, nine azalea shrubs, and two Green Giant out of lighting. Lighting will be wall-mounted on each unit above the door. All lighting will be faced downward to ensure that no lighting will spill onto any abutting properties. The dumpster located in the rear here will be located on a concrete pad. It'll be located on a concrete pad and completely fenced with a, with fencing, with vinyl fencing, and a gate to ensure that, you know, blocked from the public. The property will be serviced by Town Water, I'm sorry, City Water, City of Taunton Water, and it's also going to be serviced by an on-site septic system, which we have proposed here. Park tests were done and witnessed by the Lakeville Board of Health, and a design will be what will come if this project is approved, as is. The stormwater for the property, which I will go to the next sheet. So this is our grading slash grading plan. As you can see, it's got a lot more information as far as the drainage and grading and what have you, utilities. So basically, all the stormwater for the, almost the entire property is going to be conveyed through catch basin, deep suppoed catch basins, drainage manholes, which are all being piped along the sides of the building here and here, and then they're being piped into this drain manhole, excuse me, here, which has what's called a first defense unit in it. That first defense unit is used as a proprietary measure to remove what's called T S S, total suspended solids, so it's your silts and things of that nature that get into, on the parking lot and within those catch basins and drain manholes. That tidal stormwater management requires 80% removal. These, these units alone remove that. You also are granted credit with the deep suppoed catch basins and things of that nature as well. But we are gaining that requirement just by the use of this first defense unit in the drain manhole. There is also a small underground, so I'm sorry, so there's also this large infiltration basin here, which is located, that's where everything is discharged to. This infiltration basin is sized to meet the 100-year 24-hour storm event, so seven inches of rain over a 24-hour span is what the requirement for the EP stormwater management requirements are. We've provided calculations as part of the submittal to show and demonstrate that we've met those requirements. There's also a small infiltration underground chambers located at the front of the site here. This is because, this is about a five or six-foot slope here at the entrance, so we couldn't get all this water back here just because of the sheer depth of the pipe that would need to be there. And because this is a state highway layout, Mast Dot will not allow any water from a property, from a proposed property to go onto their, to go onto their layout. So what we do to ensure that that will not occur is we provide this trench grate, which is, which is pretty typical on a lot of these sites. This trench grate here is discharged into these underground chambers. There's nine of these cul-de-sac chambers here that infiltrates that, again, 100-year storm event. And these, these will all be reviewed by Mast Dot as well as part of their approval process once we get to that point. The next sheet is the erosion control. This is kind of more for the contractor, you know, to ensure that during construction, things are handled properly. We've proposed what's called a construction entrance. It's a riprap entrance that is there to ensure that when large trucks, construction vehicles are coming on and off the site, that knocks off the debris off the tires and doesn't go out onto Main Street, which obviously would be a major concern. So this is a standard practice as well. And then any debris that does get onto Main Street would have to be swept, you know, swept daily or as needed. And all that information is all provided in these operation and maintenance plans as well. We're also providing a silt sock for erosion control at the down gradient side of the, of the project here, as depicted here. We're also providing what's called silt sacks. Go to the detail sheet, just bear with me. So silt sack is here. These are what go into the catch basin. They're basically just a sack that goes in with the grate, and it captures any silt that will go into the, get into the, into the drainage piping before it actually gets in there. And this will capture it in the contract that has to empty, empty these as they, you know, as they see fit and, you know, as needed. So. And basically, the last, the last thing is just that all this, this whole site has been designed to meet stormwater management standards, DEP stormwater bridge standards. We've provided all that information in our drainage report, which has been submitted to you. There's a stormwater checklist that is implemented by the DEP, and we've gone through that and provided, you know, all the information that we see necessary to ensure that all these, these are adequately met. So besides that, I think that's kind of just a brief general overview of the project, and I'd obviously be very happy to answer any questions that the board or anybody else would have.
Thanks, Niles.
Thank you.
So where do I begin? I talked to Jamie earlier today. I'm sure he spoke to you. Yes?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, yes. Sorry.
That was about landscape?
Yes.
Is the owner of the property present with you?
Yes, he is. Bo McMahon for Bluefin Realty.
So, Bo, were those comments that I made passed on to you about landscape? So I believe what was passed on to me is that the board would be looking for some sort of enhanced landscape plan, which I'm, I'm more than willing to do. Yeah, I mean, at a minimum, and I know the lot coverage shows on the cover page of the plan, that you have a good-sized lot and we have 44% lot coverage proposed, Niles?
That's correct.
I do question that a little bit just because I'm wondering if you can't use the residential zone for the business property, so I don't know that the lot coverage should be not based on the residential zone, but only on the business property itself, which would change that percentage quite a bit. In turn, I think that would trigger at least one of the town's density bonuses. I do think that the Planning Board's going to request an opinion from Town Council on that lot coverage based on the zoning. But I do appreciate and would, would like the, the landscape component to be offered up by the owner. I think that that's a good olive branch and it, again, this is like the second or third building somebody sees when they pull into town. And as drawn, I mean, it's not exactly the most appealing and attractive-looking building, and I'm not picking on it. I don't want you to think that, you know, I knew you were probably going to spend a pretty penny here, and it's a big investment, but it also now becomes the face of Lakeville as you enter town. So it, and again, if through Council's recommendation or opinion, if the residential zone wouldn't be counted toward your lot coverage, that would trigger the architectural bonus rather than landscape, which I think the Planning Board might have somewhere to room on as long as one of the density bonuses is met. Moving on, have you received any Mast Dot approval on the road opening or the curb cut, Niles? Because I noticed it is sort of close to Riverside Drive, but offset, and from a vehicular safety standpoint, I don't know if that's ideal.
So the way it works, Mr. Chairman, is we Mast Dot, fortunately, but unfortunately, will not review any access permits until all local approvals are in hand. So we have to have all, all approvals, whether that be conservation, that, whether that be planning board, building permit, things of that nature, have to be in hand before Mast Dot will look at these.
Understood.
That being said, as far as the, and something I probably should have mentioned, and I believe I provided to the board, we did have a traffic assessment done, and, you know, they, they looked at stop and sight distance, things that, and traffic count. And that's all been provided in there, and we believe we've addressed all of those concerns. So that is part of the public practice as well.
Yep, it is in the packet. I'm not a traffic expert, though. But we will review that in depth. Notice, what did you say, eight parking spaces?
Yes.
And is that based on number of employees per the bylaw? Because it seems like with three floors of building, there's, there's the potential for an awful lot more vehicle flow than eight parking spaces.
That is based off of the zone.
Just for zone, for the employee base?
That's correct, for the employee base. But as far as the self-storage goes, I mean, if you look at most self-storage facilities, even the ones in town or in the area, and you, but you, you know, you, there's not, there is not a lot of traffic flow. The average, I think the statistic is, and I can confirm this, but the statistic is, is that a person typically visits their, their storage facility about two and a half times per year. So you, you know, you do the math, it's not, there's not a lot of traffic generated from these sites. But I do understand the concern, you know, and we can definitely look at that. But it's, you know, it's our, it's our, you know, it's our position that this, this meets the requirements for parking.
Okay. Something else that I talked to Nate Darling about. There are two other self-storage places in Lakeville. One's on County Road in Lakeville, which is in a business zone, but it does have some special permit components to its existence. The other is on Route 44, which is an industrial zone. I tried to find it in our zoning bylaw after actually one of our other planning board members mentioned the fit to zoning. And again, the zoning enforcement official in town has kind of explained to me using what's in the zoning breakdown, you would either find the most similar use as a comparison, or if it's not in there, it's not allowed. I can't find anything in Lakeville's business zoning district that I find to be similar to self-storage. Can you speak to that?
Of course.
How we arrived here?
Absolutely. So I, one of the first things that we did was reach out to the building inspector and with the same exact question, and it was his determination that under the business district, there is a, there is a category as business use. It was his understanding that that met the requirement for the self-storage, that is, that it is a business. So that's, that's where, what he derived, and we have that in an email form. Actually, I can read the email if you like from, from the building inspector. Do you mind?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so this is an email from Nathan Darling, the building commissioner. Says, "I struggled to find an answer to that same question when I was permitting Maxon's expansion. I would have normally gravitated towards warehousing, which is not allowed in a business district, whereas there was no specific relief for this use at that location. I asked a few folks and came up with it just being a general business use. Our bylaw is awful as to where this is placed." And it says, "Business or professional office or bank." I know this is not ideal, but historic interpretation would conclude that self-storage is allowed in the business district. And that was that, and that's, that's all it says. So that's what we're, that's what we're utilizing as our zoning classification.
Mark, can I interject on that point?
Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Under Lakeville zoning district, and I'm looking at our, the revisions from November 2018. I don't think it's changed since then in this category. Under 4.1.2, we do have storage of junk, oh, that's storage of junk for commercial purposes. I apologize. I just thought it was storage or something. It's a special permit. So no, I don't see that use in here on this schedule, but I'll move on. I'm sorry.
Have you received the water allocation for the Board of Selectmen? No, they said this is the first step.
So I'm being told that he has not, because he reached out and they said this was the first step. So this, they will, he will receive that once this is granted.
Okay. When you do the work within the layout of the road, I know the trench drain is right there at the edge of it, and I believe that there are sidewalks along there. Do you know if you'll be having to comply with whatever state standards to repaint the crosswalk across that entrance when that?
You're, you're breaking up, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I lost you there.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So through your experience getting approved through Mast Dot, and there are sidewalks across the front of that property, when you do your curb cut, will you be required by them to repaint the sidewalk striping?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there'll be more detailed plans generated for Mast Dot that will be, you know, that we will have to go through, you know, a rigorous process. It typically takes about six to eight months minimum to, to, to get that approval.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. No question. I just was curious as to if we wanted to try and have something on the plan if they don't require that or didn't, just to make sure that it happened. Because I know there's, there's a lot going on nearby this property and adjacent, and a lot of scrutiny, so we want to make sure that everybody, you know, dots all their i's and crosses all their t's.
Understood.
The only other question I have is on, I guess, the southern edge of this property, it appears to a butt, some sort of, looks like a roadway or a right-of-way. What is that, or can you explain that?
I believe that that is the access to the proposed Rhino Capital project.
And so the funeral home is on the other side of this property?
That is correct. This dotted line here.
Yep.
The approximate funeral home project.
Okay. Would any other planning board members like to ask any questions?
I'd like to see a rendering, Niles. Do you have anything that shows what the exterior of the property is supposed to look like?
See, bear with me. I have to pull up my email with a. Can you see that?
Yes, we see a cover page.
I just want to make sure I'm, I apologize. I just want to make sure I'm showing the right thing here. Just walk through. This is my site plans. Again, they don't have any colored renderings at this point. That's it. Yeah, so this is really what we have at this point. The rear elevation, front elevation here, and Bo, I can, will you discuss this a little bit more?
Sure, I can walk through it real quick. So it's showing the both front and front northerly side of the building being mostly glass, and that's the office area of, which is depicted in this front elevation and the right side elevation. So this right side elevation would be the elevation presented while entering the town of Lakeville, and that will be mostly a glass facade in the front. The rest of it is going to have base level roll-up door units, and the rest of the building is going to be insulated metal panels. And around the entry doors, the loading doors to get in and out to access to the elevators, that's going to have a masonry or veneer paneling around it.
Thank you.
You have any other questions, Barbara?
Are we going to cover the memos that we've received?
Yep, I'm just going to let everybody ask questions, and then I'll read through.
It's the last of my questions for the moment.
I'd like to ask a question regarding Fire Chief O'Brien's comments in his letter of March 12. Can you explain to me how you, is there any way that you can control the contents that are going into these different storage units? So, you know, he speaks to his concern about the hazardous materials. Are you able to?
Jack, can I just, you know, I don't know if Mr. Zager has seen that memo. Have you seen that, Niles?
We actually have. We will, we will forward it down memo.
Okay. All right, so did you get all of Jack's question, or do you want him to continue?
I'll tell you. Is there any way to somehow identify and control what your different clients are putting into those storage units?
Sure. So there is a mass storage association that puts out a standard lease agreement per each tenant per facility, which is pretty standard across New England, and there's a detailed list of prohibited materials that would be barred from entry in the unit, and that would be explained and signed during lease up and during the signing of each individual lease.
Okay. Thank you.
So just, just for the record, I'm going to read what the chief, Fire Chief O'Brien had sent to your board members. This document has been written to provide comment on the proposed self-storage facility to be located at 15 Main Street in Lakeville. Self-storage facilities have historically been more hazardous. Uh, self-storage facilities have historically been more hazardous. When compared to other traditional storage occupancies of similar size and construction. Security of the individual units is a design and marketing priority. These security, secured units are very difficult to breach in the event of a fire. As in the case with this plan. The units are often, often not separated with fire-rated walls, allowing the fire to spread from unit to unit. Contents and usage of these units are often not controlled or monitored. Result. Is the presence of material that would never be permitted in a traditional storage facility. Firefighters have encountered flammable liquids, explosives, compressed gases. Various hazardous materials in these units. Uh, to make matters worse, uh. Is that the volume and configuration of the contents within the storage units. Often obstructs the engineered performance of sprinkler systems. Fire code requires eighteen inches of clearance. Uh, space from each sprinkler head, a requirement that is nearly impossible to enforce in these private units. Uh, fire department comments, he's got number one, clearly marked fire lane, twenty feet in width. With turning radiuses to accommodate the department's ladder truck will be required. The properly marked fire department sprinkler connection will be on the street side of the facility. Fire department connection will be a single four-inch stores. Uh, and will have clear access from the fire lane. Department requires the installation of a fire hydrant. At a location near the front entrance of the facility configured such that the water supply will be. On the same side of Main Street as the structure. And that's it. Uh, so Niles, in your design, have you accommodated for the fire lane as he has there?
Um, so again, we didn't revise the plan, but we have looked at it and we can absolutely, um, make that available. We can stripe a twenty-foot fire lane around the entire building. Um, and we can, we've also already run a, a model of the, uh, Lakeville, the largest, uh, truck. I believe it's about fifty-eight, almost fifty-nine feet in length by nine feet wide. Um, we've run a, uh, you know, a turning template that we have, um, through the entire property and have. Ensured that that will work. We can provide that information, um, in the revised set of plans, uh, for the planning board's review.
Okay, um, while I'm on the subject, the, uh. Board of selection. I've also put together a memo. Did you see that Niles?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, they, well, it pointed out, uh, six different concerns. I believe one has been already. Adjusted on the plan, which is the zoning line between residential and business.
That's correct.
Uh. They're requiring a landscape plan, which, uh, we're not sure that that applies, but we would appreciate. Uh. Some improvements in the landscape. Uh. The comment, front design should be done appropriately. A condition should be put in place that no business should be allowed. To do work in the storage area. Uh. Fire apparatus, uh, which has been discussed. And they were, they requested the planning board have a peer review done on the projects. Uh, so at this point, I'd like to go back to any other planning board members. Uh, Peter, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mark. Um, so a couple of them have been answered so far. Uh, so you, you're going to do a twenty-foot fire lane around the, uh, outer radius. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, um, and, um, that'd be a no parking zone, correct? At all times. My next question, this building is sprinkled. Is that what I read somewhere?
Yes, it is.
The entirety of it?
Yes, yes.
So what, like, and in your, in your intent letter from the city of Taunton, they, they can provide water for that? Or is there storage?
We can't get that letter until we get through this, this stage. I did reach out to the city of Taunton and the water department. And they are willing to review it. Um, but until we get through this stage. And I think Niles designs the, the water flow letter, then we can present that to the city of Taunton to make sure that it's sufficient.
All right. So, because like when I look at the mechanical details, like I only see like an inch and a half, um, for just, that's just portable water. That, that doesn't include any, um.
Correct. The, the inch and a half is just for the one single half bath next to the office. And then the full fire suppression sprinkler system will have its own dedicated line from the street.
Okay. Um. The, uh, there's no gates to get in here to, uh, to get, to get to the back? I'm sorry, I'm breaking, I'm very dry tonight, uh. Is somebody driving in off the street who doesn't have business there can drive completely around this building all the time? Is that right?
At, at this current design, we are contemplating potential gate designs that would be past the, the office area. So the, the front, uh, portion of the building, section sixty-five to fifty-nine. Would be exposed for office entrance with potential gating for the area around that.
Okay. And then whatever you do for gating, you devise whatever you need to for the fire department?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, how many total units are in here? Uh, total storage units?
Oh, four hundred and fifty-five.
Four fifty-five? Okay.
Eight parking spaces, really enough?
I can answer that Mark if you'd like. No. I assume you're going to let people park, uh, along their, along their bays if they, if they rent a bay. Um, obviously right in front of their bay, that, that's where the park be parking, correct? Um. But what if several people are using like the side, the side doors near their elevators? Like, will everyone pile up? I'm, I'm wondering.
So generally and historically with these buildings and consulting and having a feasibility design done. Um, the, the maximum amount of traffic would be during lease up. And the majority of lease up happens kind of nine through fourteen months from project completion. And I believe Niles touched on it earlier, but the industry average for Massachusetts. Is two and a half, on average, two and a half unit visits per year, per unit. Which, which is a pretty low number.
So there will be a ten-foot wide section, um, you know, it's basically like a parallel space along the entire. Building, um, that a car can park. Uh, that a vehicle can park. And this building is, I believe, three hundred and twenty feet long. If I remember, excuse me.
Could you switch back to the site plan, please, Niles, or the?
Of course, uh, just bear with me. I'm sorry. I had too many things open on my screen, man.
Um, wh- while you're switching over, Niles, I just, I want to read a comment, uh. Brian Day made the comment that. Uh, we had asked about. A contents, or Jack had asked about the contents of each space. Uh, I think that's related to the combustion issue. And so he said, in, in regards to the response, does this mean that it's the honor system? After the customer has signed the agreement and that there are no checks after, uh, the initial signing of the contract?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I couldn't hear your, your first part of the comment, but was this regarding the fire department's comment about hazardous materials being stored?
Yeah, you had brought up the fact that there's a standard contract. That, uh, you would have an occupant sign?
Yeah, there is. And it would be very similar to if you had a single-family home and you let someone, uh, rent it. It, it's very difficult to control what they bring inside the home. You can spell everything out in, in the lease. Um, but as a business owner, you can't just barge into someone's unit to kind of see what they have in there. But it, it would be, if it was found out, it would be a reason for removal from them for their unit.
Okay.
Uh, Mark, can I, yeah, can, can I ask a, a couple more questions?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Niles, just, just, just a thought, I, 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 I know you don't have the, uh, the turning radius of the fire trucks on these yet, but. It seems to me that like you'll have to stop the tenant parking a little early on the sides. Would you agree? Like, uh, so that, because, or will they be, they won't be able to park right to the very end? Like if, if, I'm looking at the shared screen right now and where the exit only. It seems like tenant parking should stop at least there, uh, no closer to the end of the buildings. And you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I can't see a fifty-eight foot truck being able to make a corner if, if, um, i- if, if cars extend any closer to the corner. Is what I mean, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. And again, I think we have to, definitely going to have to, uh, demonstrate the, um. Um, you know, no parking area, uh, absolutely.
And that's like all for, not, except for the, I guess the only corner that wouldn't be an issue would be the office area. But the other three all need like quite a bit of setback to, to have any kind of cornering.
Understood. Yeah, no, I, I think once I provide that, that turn, uh, fire, uh, truck. We have an exhibit that we provide, that we, uh, that we, uh, created. I just haven't had a, a time to clean it up. Uh, because I wanted to make it as a clean presentation. At the next hearing, we'll, we'll absolutely, um, you know, use that as a presentation. And I'll be, uh, prepared to, to, uh, uh, present that to you.
Yeah, we appreciate that, Niles. I, I think that to Peter's point too. And my general thoughts are the whole first floor, if it's overhead doors. And I had a pickup truck and I rented a space, I would not parallel park. I would back into that door. So typical pickup trucks about twenty feet long. And with only thirty feet of pavement, that only leaves ten feet in front of the truck. Or a fire apparatus to get in front of the vehicle. So. And again, I know you said you have not included that update yet, but I think that should be brought into consideration with that design. That more people are going to not parallel park at a garage door. They're going to want to back into it.
So they could back into the, to, to the, um, storage facility, though still ten feet plus into it. And unload. So, you know, yeah, we're assuming worst-case scenario, twenty feet out. They could back into the facility itself. So that there would be, is less of an overhang.
Yeah, but well, they're going to fill their unit right out to the edge. So I think that they'll, they're going to stop on the pavement outside. Offload into the space and the vehicle is going to be entirely outboard. Uh, and again, I know you had said ten feet around the building would be for this parking area, but you'd be parking in somebody's, in front of somebody else's door. And I, I, I know you also said two and a half times a year, but. You'll be blocking the neighbor's door and the odds are that that's the day they show up to get in and then they'll be sticking straight out.
So, so to that, and I, I agree, um, to that point. Um, I understand that the fire lane is twenty feet wide. Um, you know, and obviously that twenty feet of truck would overlap ten feet into that fire lane. The fire truck itself is ten foot, is, is at, is at, I believe, eight. I have to double check my numbers, but it's probably roughly eight to nine feet wide. Um, we've measured, we've actually measured the, the truck, uh. Uh, yeah, our office has measured the truck and that's why we have the template that we do. Um, so worst-case scenario, even if there were a truck parked there and fully overlapping. Um, the truck would, the fire truck would still be able to get by.
Yeah, o- other than on the corners, which Peter brought up, which might be a bit challenging.
Yeah, I mean, we, I guess, yeah. We'll, we'll have to look at that.
Okay, uh, yeah, but, and again, I'm not looking to beat you up over it as much as I wanted to fully vet the process with you. So that you come back with a design accounting for those probably mitigating factors that are going to occur.
No, we appreciate you bringing up all the concerns now. So thank you.
Now, I have one question.
Go ahead, Jack.
I just had one question pertaining back to what, uh, Peter said about the, the turning radius and the parking. Wouldn't that also pertain though to the office area? Because on any given day, you might have multiple cars parked. Near the office to go in to speak to, to the, the manager or whoever's on duty. And wouldn't that also cause a turning radius issue as well?
They, they would be parked, the idea is to park in the front here. Um, it would be to park here.
Right.
So that would, that would allow, and again, I'll, I, I apologize. I, I just didn't want to provide that information because it wasn't actually formally submitted. But I have that for the next meeting. I'll be able to show you. It's in, in color. With a turning radius, the truck size, and it goes, or it wraps around the entire. Building, uh, facility, and it demonstrates that it does work. Um, so I will provide it to you and show you. It'll be, again, it's easier to see it in person than for me to sit here and try to explain it.
Thank you, Niles.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you have a question?
I did, Mark. Thank you. Um, so I'm glad that he provided, uh, the feedback from Nate. Uh, that's great. Um, because when I look under four point one point two, under business uses. And, and I see, you know, it says business or professional office or bank. So to me, I mean, this seems like I see they have an office. Um, and it would almost appear that the storage portion is an accessory use. Um, I'm wondering if any of the other planning board members would think it's appropriate to possibly. Have these plans be seen by the zoning board of appeals under, uh, Barbara started to mention it. Um. For storage of junk for commercial purposes. It's on page fifty-four.
So, yeah, Michelle, you read my mind. Um, I actually think, I have, I have several concerns, which I don't need to get into right now. I think first and foremost, we need to find out from council if this is, um, appropriate use, right?
We, we will ask the question.
Okay.
Um, and my understanding from talking to Nate, uh, today. Was, I, I believe, because I have an accessory building at one of my properties, that it's detached. The requirement for an accessory building is that it's detached and it. It would not be the main. Uh. Purpose of the occupancy of the, the main tenant. It would be an accessory use that could, the, the main tenant could survive without.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
So that's where it's kind of tricky because like when I read the business. Or let me go back to it, uh, business or professional office. So if, if you're saying that this isn't really a business office. Then I don't see how it could fall into our zoning currently, you know, but because of its storage.
Didn't we answer this question when we gave the, um, we got a conceptual presentation from, uh. A person who wanted to have a partial retail and partial storage onsite and it was, we couldn't do it. It was just. A done deal, couldn't be done.
So, I mean, definitely I'd like counsel opinion on, you know, how this would, you know, fall into our bylaws. And then if it would be appropriate, um, to, to go before ZBA as well.
So to Barbara's point. Uh, gentleman that she spoke of, his specific business was distribution. Which is specifically industrial zone. That's why it wasn't allowed.
That's true. He did have some distribution. Okay.
Uh, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, um, hi, I'm, I'm here tonight with, uh, Bo and Niles. Um, as I understand it, Nate's opinion is, is based on the historical application of this type of facility. Um, that's been interpreted over two or three of his predecessors in time. So, um, to, to make a, a, a shift right now would be very inconsistent with past practice. And, um, I, I agree with y'all. It's, it's unclear. Um, but, but based on what Nate has indicated, his interpretation to us is, uh, you know, we, we were comfortable going forward with this project.
I would still like to see, you know, town council as opposed to the applicant council though. What her, her opinion is.
So, and it, yeah, that, I agree on all parts. Something from Amy Questle, who does all the towns land use, just for her opinion. Uh, if nothing else, just gratification. And that's something that Nate talked to me about was. Him and three other. Previous, uh, building commissioners. previous, uh, building commissioners did allow this use. Uh, but that was the property that I mentioned that's, uh, with several special permits or, yeah, because of what they were just mentioning with the accessory buildings. That was broken up differently, uh, with a singular office. And then every building on the property is an accessory building with a special permit. So that's, that's unique in itself, makes it different from this one. So we just want a clarification. Uh, so mo- moving on, any other planning board members have any questions?
I guess, you know, um, I'd like to find out that the landscaping, you know, Board of Selectmen brought it up. I certainly noticed it. Uh, when we talk about the building materials that would be using for this property and the visual, I mean, it's just painful for me to consider a metal sided building coming into our rural town. It doesn't, you know, I realize we don't have the design guidelines to really say no to that. But we would like to at least screen it as much as possible if we can't compromise on the materials that are used on the exterior. At least that's my opinion. Um, like to not see as little of it as possible. And we also haven't talked about signage at all. What kind of signage would be talking about for hours of operation?
Uh, Bo or Niles, would you like to speak to that?
Sorry about that. I was on mute. I apologize. Um, so there is a sign currently proposed in the front here. Um, Bo, do you have a design on that yet at this point?
So, so we don't, we don't have a design on that yet. Um, but it, it'd be very minimal signage to me, whatever requirements are, are in place.
I believe it's a, correct me if I'm wrong anyone, but I believe it's a four by eight sign is the maximum allowed, correct?
Yeah, for a singular business, it's 32 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
There are some specific regulations, like the design of the sign as far as can't overhang. Uh, or can't lever off of a singular post. I think it has to be held up by two posts and be between them. Uh, anybody else?
Oh, I have something else, Mark. Um, I mean, you know, if, if this is, you know, all right to go ahead with the zoning use, um, I definitely would like to see peer review. I know, uh, Board of Selectmen asked for that as well. But, um, considering they did get the engineered, uh, traffic, um, projections, I think we should have that, uh, reviewed on behalf of the town as well. And, um, you know, considering we have the three egresses so very close together. Um, and I know that they've, they've worked together, you know, with, with Rhino Capital on, you know, that proposed development as well as far as, um, the, uh, that, the, um, grading in that area. So I'm curious to know, you know, has there been any discussion as to a combined entrance? Um, especially knowing that there may be a proposed traffic light at that same area. Um, wouldn't it make more sense to have all of the traffic entering, you know, through that traffic light? If possible. It just seems like poor planning if we allow, you know, multiple entrances so close. Um, I don't know.
Um, so I, I do think that something like that would require easements and strict compliance from a neighbor because it's not a roadway that they'd be going on. It would be their property. Um, I don't, Mike, you could probably speak to this too, but would that even be allowed from an access and egress standpoint? To pull it into somebody else's driveway?
I, I, I think it's a good point that, that's been brought up. I'm looking at the plan thinking the same thing. Um, yeah, we would need a cross easements and all that stuff. I, I think what I would suggest is, um, you know, um, we're gonna have some time here between the next hearing. I'll talk to Bo about it. Maybe we can reach out to Rhino Capital if they're willing to work with us. Maybe it's something we consider. If not, then, um, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck where we are with the one entrance. But yeah, we, we can look into it and ask, ask them. That, that's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Um, do any other planning board members have opinions on, uh, any peer review?
Yeah, wait. Yes, I think the list needs to be much longer. Stormwater management, traffic. Um, like somebody look at the sprinkler plan and parking and landscaping were on my list. And just to confirm the lot coverage, we use some lot coverage are, are first. The landscaping, uh, plan that's going into effect, um, I shouldn't say going into effect. I should say if it goes, if, if it's approved to do that other development, the landscaping is very specific requirements. It would be nice to consider some continuity perhaps. Um, but we won't know if that's gonna be approved for probably another couple of months.
Uh. So, I, I think that the, the landscape component of peer review was kind of a tough one because I don't, at this point, unless council gives the opinion that lot coverage is only based on business zone portion of this property, that they don't meet the requirements of a density bonus and, um, as sad to say as it is, I mean, we'd be totally relying on, you know, the applicant, which I hope he would offer the best landscape, but I don't think that we can make that part of a peer review.
Can it be part of the conditions? I mean, I think, I, I guess we should just let, let, let you guys know. I mean, this is, this is a tough one for, it's a tough one for me. Um, I won't speak for anybody else. The visual is just really tough. So if there's any way to consider screening that, and I'm just gonna mention the Board of Selectmen said exactly the same thing. So I don't think it's gonna be, um, unique to myself or Board of Selectmen. I think the community as a whole is gonna be very concerned about, um, you know, the change, the change in what's happening to our community right around this area.
Yep, a- a- agreed. And we all want it to be as beautiful as possible. Uh, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll talk, Bo, I and Niles will talk about it. I don't think, uh, an additional or more enhanced landscaping plan is, is unreasonable, particularly what's given there. We can look at what Rhino's done and, and see if we can incorporate some, 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 uh, some of their components to kind of make it, you know, uh, transition nicely, I guess, for lack of a better description. Um, I think that's what the board's saying. Try to get it to, um, mirror somewhat, um, what, what's going on on, on the site next door. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Fair, fair to say, yes. Uh, and it's really, we're looking more at the, the front, maybe 25% of your, uh, building location, not, not even the whole lot, but front 25% that people would see from Route 105.
Okay, fair enough. That's something we can look at. I don't think that's.
All right. Appreciate that. Um, so Barbara, do you want to take any action towards, uh, requesting some pricing or peer review?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess if that's the next step, I guess before we even take that extra step, I'd, I'd love to hear from, from Amy, um, both on lot coverage and on use.
Okay, so then at this point, I'd like to make a motion to continue, uh, this site plan review until, I believe it's April 8th.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Peter.
Um, what would be the harm in doing those last two items simultaneously? Just to, uh, you know, I see no harm in, in, um, in getting a, um, an estimate.
I agree. I think, uh, the applicant probably has no problem with us asking for a price. We're not charging them anything on, but I think we need to be specific with the disciplines that we have reviewed. I think stormwater management, the traffic study that they did and the parking are in my eyes the most, uh, important, uh, and fire suppression could be as far as, uh, with the use of the units that, the concerns that the chief had brought up. I don't think we just say do extra stuff and, Mike?
I, I think, I think the, uh, fire suppression calculations are looked at, um, that, that's part of the fire department's bailiwick. So, um, once, once this is all approved, the fire department would have a fire suppression engineer come and review both calculations and make sure it's sufficient to cover the building.
Okay, um, and that's actually would be during construction.
It would be prior to, it'd be part of the building permit process is what it would be.
Yeah, I mean, I went through it. I'm a little bit familiar with it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I don't think it's, I, I agree with you. They, they, they need a professional engineer to design it.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not really an approval process as much as the professional engineer has to put his license on the line that it meets the requirements. So, but you're probably right that the fire chief will get a look at that. I believe that's accurate. Uh, so you're, I would agree that we don't need to include that as much as that's handled through the, the approval and the construction control process. Um, and that's, that's actually, there'll be a lot of disciplines within the building that get looked at with construction control by many experts because of the cubic square footage of the building. Uh, so I agree, we should stay outside the floor walls other than the, uh, fire hookup, which I think is there and, you know, you guys are providing that for the fire department.
And Mark, at what point would we check to make sure that the water usage is sufficient for the, um, for the install?
I think that if we approve something, we would approve it pending receipt of, or the town receiving receipt of public water and other utility approvals.
Okay, thank you.
That seemed fair, Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
Sorry, absolutely.
Yep, um. Okay, so I started to make a motion. I'll continue, make a motion to continue this hearing until April 8th at 7:00 PM. Um, in the interim, the planning board will, um, seek, uh, some pricing on peer review of stormwater management, parking, and was there one other one?
Yeah, traffic, stormwater management.
Yeah, the traffic report, those three items. And also, uh, an opinion from town council on the lot coverage applying to the business zone only for if the reduction from the residential would be peeled off from the lot coverage because it can't be used anyway. Sort of like the, uh, wetlands doesn't count towards a lot coverage. And that would then possibly trigger a density bonus. So that's a sloppy motion. Uh, I'm gonna restate it. Uh, motion to continue to April 8th, 7:00 PM. Board will seek peer review on stormwater management, parking and, uh, traffic while seeking an opinion on town councils a lot coverage.
And you?
Is that, is it's at least one second? So, um.
Oh, no, I think we both said and use. I think we said the same thing. Sorry, Mark.
All right, and use, yep.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Thank you guys for coming in. We will see you in, uh, two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, so back to other business. Next item on the agenda is number three, floodplain bylaw. Which I, I didn't get a chance to review too much, but I actually got an update from the building commissioner. He got some, uh, guidance from Eric Carlson at the state level regarding the floodplain bylaw, which was helpful in updating, uh, for him, the new, new floodplain bylaw to co-mingle it with our existing floodplain bylaw. Um, so again, I'm sorry, uh, this, this require a motion or do we need to agree on this to then post a public hearing?
Um, I think we're, we're waiting last, Mark, for Amy to get back to us to see if she had any changes to this. That my last was.
I'm not sure if she's seen it.
Okay, so if we can post, we probably should. But I don't know that this is, can be posted if she hasn't reviewed.
No, she definitely needs to review it. Um, roll here for a minute. Kathy, has, uh, Amy Questle seen this latest version of the floodplain bylaw?
Seen it or she has it, but I haven't heard anything back about it. Yeah.
Okay, um. When do we need to know by? I mean, it's gonna take about three weeks to get a hearing posted, correct? Uh. It actually looks like in the email chain that she has received it.
Mm-hmm.
March 18th?
Yep.
So Kathy, maybe you could, uh, just send it a follow-up to the latest revisions from Eric Carlson and Nate on the floodplain bylaw for her approval for a public hearing? All right. Thank you.
Thanks. I did talk to Nate too about the language for the legal ad, so.
Okay, so you're ready to go. Let's just get Amy's blessing.
Ready to go, just that I would need that also.
Kathy, what date does this need to be done? When do you need to post for the public hearing?
Before town meeting.
I know, but don't we need, don't we need three weeks before town meeting?
No, we need, it takes three weeks to get it. From the time we say post it, Kathy, it takes three weeks to get it into the paper for two prior weeks before the hearing.
Okay, so it just needs to be in plenty of time so that it can be presented at town meeting. Got it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, Kathy, you, when you hear something, just send me and Barbara an email as soon as you get response from, uh, Amy. And even if we needed to call a special meeting or add it to a, an agenda of one of the off Thursday other meetings after other businesses concluded to make sure that we get this done. Thank you. Uh, next, well, but I haven't received or seen anything since, uh, Amy commented on bylaw. I, I had responded with the intent, but again, still haven't seen response. So, uh, Kathy, would you mind sending a follow-up to see if that's something that she's working on? Or if it's something we could just take off of our agenda and we're, we're gonna miss the town meeting on? We'll continue to work on it for fall town meeting, but, um, that said, um, Norman O'Reilly, I know you were here because you saw site plan review on the agenda. I'll give you a, a brief update. What we were doing was trying to amend that bylaw so that, uh, existing properties that made, uh, changes that were not significant, uh, but the way that the bylaw was currently drafted could trigger a site plan review on a business because it almost just changed tenants. Uh, so the reason that's on there is we were trying to amend that bylaw so that Nate didn't have to send everything to us for site plan review because a florist changed to, uh, card gift shop.
Yeah.
Sure. I appreciate that. And, and the clerk, uh, thank you, did, did point that out to me. I would just offer the section 6.7.3 of the site plan review, uh, bylaw is the procedure for residential. So I, I understand what you were having looked at were changes for the commercial part. But I, I think my point of joining is, is there a need to look at the residential portion of that bylaw as well? Um, generally, the, this, the, the residential portion of the bylaw says that applicants for a building permit for new construction or for modification or addition to any residential structure which will disturb more than 43,560 square feet of ground shall submit, and it goes on safe from there. And so I'm looking for clarification that on that part of the bylaw, and then the question is if council's already looking at site plan review, should that be looked at? Because what I'm witnessing is, uh, work being done on residential lots disturbing more than an acre and there's been no site plan review. And I'm just trying to understand, based on my reading of that bylaw, it would be when the building permit application happens. What's not clear, I guess, in the bylaw is, when, when does the site plan have to be approved? Is it after construction? Is it before construction begins, et cetera? So if there is a tightening up of that bylaw, that's just my reason for coming, offering that as a question. And if, if you're already looking to make some minor modifications to the commercial part, which I understand that makes sense, is there something to look at in the residential to tighten up when the procedure applies? Prior to construction, during construction, after construction? While, while permits are issued, before permits are issued, et cetera? So those are the sorts of clarifications that, that I'm currently looking for. And unfortunately, the timing doesn't seem to be in the bylaw. I mean, it implies that before a permit would be issued, that the application is what kicks off that site plan review. And I think that's, that's, that's my, I guess, question or clarification. I didn't know if that was being looked at, if it should be looked at.
It's an excellent point, Norman. You know, something else that we, many people don't realize is that if you remove a certain amount of soil from a property, that there's, there's a thesis with that, as I recollect.
Right, so then the question is who's the enforcement officer for those sorts of things? You know, timing again during construction, when, when are these things applied? You know, it's, it's, my understanding, you know, as I'm a professional engineer, been in the civil engineering industry for almost 30 years, and my understanding is you get erosion controls and grading and stormwater improvements, all of which are part of the bylaw for residential site plan review. You would get all that done prior to beginning construction, before moving dirt, before exposing dirt. That's the purpose of the bylaw. I believe EPA is part of getting MS4 permits for the town, et cetera, require these sorts of bylaws to be in place and enforced because of the stormwater issues that can arise, erosion issues, dust issues that can arise when you disturb that amount of ground. If you look at the history, I see in the notes of the zoning bylaw, originally it was for 3,000 square feet. And in 2019, town meeting changed that to, to a full acre, which makes sense, 3,000 square feet. My gosh, my garden, I'd have to be coming to you guys, so that, that makes sense.
But that was the whole point was because it was only, it was such a low threshold.
Right.
It was ignored because it would have been for everything.
Right.
Unfortunately, some of those things that you talk about, somebody could reseed their lawn and disturb an acre.
Except, except for it's tied to a building permit application, so it's.
Yeah. When a building. I agree, but, I agree, but I'm just saying, you'd still be creating the dust and the issues by disturbing the acre. And I think we're talking about the same things, but it's the fact that some activities that wouldn't necessarily be tied to, or there's always a loophole, the building permit, until they apply for the building permit, it's not triggered. So they can go in and disturb, start pushing around. I've talked to Nate about this where what's to stop some crafty builder who wants to get around something from going in and saying, we're going to clear it, stump it? There's, there's no mechanism to stop them from going and stumping it other than if there's wetlands. And then he go and seed half of it, sit for a year. And then he go back and apply for a building permit and only have to disturb a half acre, but he's disturbed an acre and a half to get to there. So it, it's almost like we need to bring back the zoning bylaw review committee to try and go back and punch the holes in these things to then close them.
Right, right. That's, that was my purpose for bringing it up, that if, if there are holes that, that you've experienced, I know I'm experiencing holes in it. So if, if, if you are having town council look at it, that'd be, that'd be my suggestion or request to, to look at the residential, because I think currently it's just being totally ignored and it's just not applied at all, so.
Right.
You know.
Agreed, and, and we have other issues on, it's actually, there's some lots on School Street that didn't disturb the acre, but every one of them dumps water in the road, runs down and it fills a, basically it's an old drainage swale that dumps onto Pierce Ave, and it makes a real mess, but because of that acre trigger.
Right.
We can't do anything.
Right, right.
Oh, again.
It, it seems like, it seems like, you know, the Form A lots are, are difficult because, you know, historically, if it's under subdivision control, then you've got your subdivision rules that get into all the drainage and provide all the necessary requirements, but it's the Form A lots that, that, you know, don't really go through planning board for subdivision, even though multiple lots all being worked on at the same time. And that sounds like the School Street property. And, you know, so where we have this bylaw is, you know, it, it, like I said, and I think we all agree, it's just something maybe that needs looking at to tighten up.
Yeah, and, and you know what, you guys, you and Barbara talked a few minutes ago about, Barbara brought up the gravel removal and gravel removal permits and curb cuts are both granted by water selectmen, not planning.
Right.
So who, you know, who's watching? And I'm not saying somebody's neglectful, I'm just saying is the right board watching all of the things that would trigger the other issue that you're bringing up?
Right, right.
And, and then you potentially get into, you're stepping on my toes, get out of my business when you try to take something over to be helpful. We're not looking to either, but.
Right. Well, we all feel that way some days, I guess.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That, that was my point and I appreciate the time and appreciate the attention from the board. And thank you very much to Kathy Murray for her providing the information and it's very helpful, so have a good evening, folks.
Thank you. So the next item, master plan implementation. Who's got this?
Well, with Michelle's input, I sent an email to Kathy about the progress that we've made, and the suggestion is that we send the memo over to master plan implementation just to update them. I think they had sent a written request to us at our last hearing about which, you know, they just kind of want a status update and what, what kind of progress we've made. And I actually think we've made some good progress on master plan. So this memo is reflective of, of the items I think we have covered. So my, I'd like to make a motion if the, if the, if the board is amenable, amicable or whatever the word is, to have this approved and forwarded on to master plan implementation on behalf of the planning board.
There was just one little spelling thing. It says his instead of this issue on the first second paragraph. Other than that, I think it looks good.
Okay, lesson. Anybody else?
No, I, I recommend that you send it along.
Okay. Kathy, I'll make the correction. I guess, do we need to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve to forward this memo over to master plan implementation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously.
Kathy, I'll go and then forward that over to you to send on to master plan, okay?
So I have a set of minutes from May 2020, May 28th, 2020.
Well, Mark? Um, we did have a B for that master plan implementation for the fee.
All right. I don't have it in my packet there.
I know, I didn't see it either. But I think where we left off last time, we went through everything and we were just looking to have some feedback, have it circulated to Nate. Do we know if he saw this?
I feel like he did. Hold on just a minute. Gone back that far.
Yeah, the last meeting we had, 3/11, we spoke about it, so it would have been since 3/11.
Yeah, I don't see anything on, on Nate. So, okay, so perhaps we should send that list over to Nate? Kathy, is that already been forwarded?
I thought that you had forwarded it.
Maybe I did, okay. So I will do that in the letter. And I'll copy you when it goes out.
You guys good with that? Okay, I have a set of minutes from May 28th, 2020. We were a different board then. So Peter, Barbara and myself, have you had a chance to review those minutes?
I did, Mark, I read them. Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Barbara?
I'm gonna, I'm just have a hard time approving minutes from this long ago. I, you know, I really have to spend some more time on it, so I'd like to abstain on this one.
Okay, Peter?
Aye.
And I, motion carries with a majority. Next on the agenda, June 11th, 2020, minutes of meeting. Members that were present, Peter, myself and Brian Hope. Peter, did you get a chance to review these minutes?
I did, motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? I'm going to ask you, Barbara, to abstain. Would you honorably abstain from this? All right, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle, you want to abstain?
I abstain, thank you.
And Jack, I think you have to abstain as well. And I, I vote in the affirmative. Motion carries with a majority. June 18th, 2020 minutes. I have a new board. Peter, myself, Michelle and Barbara. Did you get a chance to review these minutes, Michelle?
I looked at them. That was probably my first meeting.
Yep. Peter?
Yeah, I read them. They seem accurate. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm just actually trying to stand through them. That was a very short meeting where I think I became the chairman. Dark day. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
I wasn't there.
You abstained. And myself? Aye. So motion carries with a majority. June 25th, 2020, remote meeting. Myself, Barbara, Peter and Michelle were present. Did anybody review these minutes? Hearing was on 73 Howland Road.
Yep, I read these, Mark. Motion to approve, June 25th, meeting minutes.
Can I get a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for June 25th, 2020. All in favor? Barbara?
Abstain.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack, abstain?
Abstain.
And myself vote aye. So motion carries with a majority. Stapler is out. Next I have January 7th, 2021, the 43D public hearing for 43 Main Street minutes. That's a 12-page document. Just looking for attendance. All members were present, so everybody review?
Yep, make a motion to approve.
Thanks, so for this one, I did notice some more spelling of, for some reason, she comes and goes with Gessler and Gessner for Brittany's name. And there was one item I, I just remember because I asked the question of Tyler, well, and so portion of the answer was included, but I know Tyler did speak to the, 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 the creation of the burms as early as possible into the construction process. I thought maybe that should be included because I think that, you know, that concern has kind of come up again. And it also brings me to hope that, you know, all the boards that are reviewing these, because there's so much to them, I hope that if anybody is noticing anything that's missing that's vital, I hope they're reaching out and, and letting me know. And if not me, like Kathy, have you heard anything about these minutes from any other clerk like Laurie or Fran now? So I hope that, you know, everyone is reviewing and if, if there's something missing, just, you know, I hope they are getting caught. So I was going to just go back and, and see if she could add, I'll make the spelling correction, but just see if she could add that part about the burms.
Okay, so we have some spelling corrections, addition about the burns, and also now the components that multiple boards are reviewing these. So there's two ways we can handle this. Make the changes and send them back to re-review, or we can make a motion to approve with the changes as noted and also pending changes from other boards.
Oh, one more thing, sorry, Mark. I didn't even read my own writing. Jack was not included on the last two motions, and I know he was present, so Jack, do you recall that you did vote to adjourn and to continue, I believe it was?
Believe it, yes.
Okay, so I'll have her add that as well, so it, I think, I think it would be safe to approve with those changes. And then I'll just, you know, I could send them back to Mark just to make sure that, you know, they look good.
Okay, so make a motion to approve with the changes as noted and pending any other board's changes with, that they vote. I don't want to vote definitively and then con con, make a correction. So is that fair to say we're making, making changes as noted and the approval is? The approval is pending the approval from planning board and what a health they were in this.
Right.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself vote aye. So motion carries unanimously. Lot of minutes, lot of minutes. Is there any old business? I have a number seven on my thing. Do you want to bring up anything before I move on to number eight?
I just want to ask, could we add for the next agenda just to have the CPC committee appointee? On that agenda? That's a CPA committee, so CPC. Community Preservation Committee.
And is that, you're asking to have a vote to appoint a planning board member to that committee, or are we going to have somebody from that to speak to us?
No, just to a point. I'm hoping that, you know. I know Nancy from Concom did it, did this. I'm hoping that we have enough people. The only issue I'm running into is we need somebody from Historical Commission and Parks Commission. And Parks is down a couple of members right now, so that's necessary.
Was she on?
Well, Ms. Nancy Lefave from Historical Commission, she she was on, but I don't know if she wants to be the representative, so I'll have to reach out to her again about that. She did mention another woman's name. I'll reach out to her, but Parks Commission is the one where I'm concerned. I reached out to Paula, and I think she would she would do it, but she's just got too much going on, so. That's my concern. We do, hopefully, if Parks can get a new member or two, we would have somebody. From that commission to join as well.
Michelle, this, did the Board of Selectmen have to establish this committee, or does it already exist?
It does exist. Yep, there is a general bylaw for the committee.
Okay, great. And does the, are we allowed to have people from the the public be on the committee?
Three.
Three. And they're appointed probably by Board of Selectmen, I would presume?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have, I have gotten quite a few people who are interested, Barbara, so I'm hoping to schedule another informal meeting to get everyone together and and see, you know. You know, count it all out, what we, if we have every one necessary or or what's missing.
If we were going to, do you know if the the appointees from the public or the Board of Selectmen's consideration, I might suggest. If they submit a resume, doesn't have to be something new. They don't have to spend a ton of time creating a new resume, but just the most recent one they have so that the Board of Selectmen have some. Understand who they are, and they should probably plan on attending a couple of Board of Selectmen meetings if they can. To get a sense of, that's what I would recommend to them.
Very good. Thank you.
Mark, if we're going to be talking about next agenda items for next meeting. I did send a memo to, an email out to you guys today talking about the meeting minutes. As you know, it's been kind of an ongoing issue, and I would like to have a, on next meeting, I would like to have a conversation. Maybe with some inputs from Nate and Kathy about how we're going to tackle. Getting these meeting minutes up. They, we have to change the process and we have to get caught up on them. And I'm very, very concerned about it, as you know. So I'd like to just add that for the next agenda item so that Kate and Nate and Kathy and whoever else needs to be involved with that discussion, I don't know. Who in who in the town offices would need to be involved, but anybody that needs to be involved with fixing that problem, let's get that on the agenda.
Okay. I have no problem putting that on the agenda. So I have two other things here, A and 8B. What's, what's with the envelopes?
Probably the mailings for the butters. Is that right, Kathy?
Yep.
Yep.
Town Hall doesn't supply us with envelopes?
Printed with the planning board on them.
Do we have a rubber stamp to do that instead, future or no?
Got them from the zoning board. I just continued it when I began working for the planning board.
Okay, so this is something we've done in the past?
Yeah, like I said, I think I got them when I first started, and that was three years ago, so. They they don't go that quick.
Okay, so.
Make a motion. Yeah, sign on our behalf.
Second.
Just to be clear on that, Barbara's made a motion. For me, the chairman, to sign on behalf of the entire board. Just for approval, so everybody doesn't need to.
Yep.
You got that? That's what you're seconding, Peter?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And then the item 8B. Kathy, we don't need to do anything with this, I believe, because we found that additional paperwork and we're going to sign it. Is that accurate?
I, I.
So. Go ahead.
I didn't know that it was all related, so.
Yeah, yeah, I got a call to, from. Jamie and Attorney O'Shaughnessy about this because. There was one line in this they wanted to have stricken. Because it affected. The fact that the other document wasn't found, but found it. So we just need to re-sign it and re-submit it. So everybody in the planning board, we need to re-sign a document. I think Kathy, you said you were going to put it in the vestibule. And so if everybody could please go by, this is, it's just a little lapse in paperwork that happened regarding Bella Way. It's no change to anything. We just need to sign it and get it refiled with the town clerk. So that it re-triggers the appeal period and that they can close out their paperwork with the registry of deeds. Memory serves me for my conversation. Does that sound right, Kathy? Yep.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Peter.
I I I signed that today, so so my signature's all set, but that's not 8B, is that right?
Correct. We, they were asking us to take action. That's why Mike O'Shaughnessy left early. He was going to stay and discuss 8B because there was one line that they wanted us to strike from this. And and that would then negate. Some other, the other paperwork or something, but because Kathy found the other paperwork.
Oh, all right.
8B is now stricken.
Two separate items then, and 8B is just going away and the other thing is all signed, correct?
Yeah, well, I think 8B exists. It's just we don't have to strike the line from it, re-motion to accept it.
Got it.
Because of the other item we already signed. Go ahead, Jack.
When will it be available for signature?
I believe it's in the little vestibule now. No?
Jack's not signing it.
Oh, sorry, Jack. You can't sign it because you weren't on the board yet. This is, this is, this is from back in June, I think. Actually, this is October, but.
He doesn't sign it because he didn't approve the plan.
Yep. You're off the hook, Jack.
Great.
So unless anybody else has any other announcements, I think that concludes business tonight. Barbara?
I'm sorry, Mark, to drag this on any longer, but I wanted to give you a quick update on Serpid. I sent out an email to Board of Selectmen, I think I copied you on that, talking about the federal funds, the opportunities that are going to be coming our way. They're looking for shovel-ready projects to be. Prioritized by Serpid in the next couple of weeks, so I'm hoping that. We can get our hands on some of that money in the in the bottom of the, you know, we talk about the per capita. Payout, and the money should be in our hands within 90 days on the first 50% and the balance in six, excuse me, beginning of next year. So I wanted to mention that funds available. They particularly are interested in water, water and clean water and infrastructure and infrastructure for broadband. Okay. Other thing I just want to let you know from Serpid is I had sent over, I don't know if everybody got this, but there was a PowerPoint presentation done on affordable housing. And I think that was forwarded, but I'm not 100% sure. It's really valuable. Okay, so I will just forward that out to everybody. Because poor Kathy slammed.
Can I just, I'm going to interrupt real quick, Barbara, because. I I didn't realize over in the chat. Sean from Face, Sean from Lake Cam posted that Dick Scott made a comment, and I just wanted to read it. It looks like it was regarding the self-storage place. And follow up on Brian Day's comments that there is such a thing as a right of inspection with notice. Regarding the self-storage units and the contents of them, so maybe that's something we could make note, appreciate it, Mr. Scott, if you're still watching. And that we could bring that up at the next hearing on April 8th regarding the self-storage units for the owner.
I like it. I think if we ask for a copy, we can probably see that as well.
That's really good, so we can see what's in those units. Make sure it's nothing hazardous.
Are you ready, me to go back to the Serpid update? I have one more thing, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Anybody can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the last time we had the housing production plan updated was December of 2017. He might know better than me. I'd like to make the suggestion that we get an update to the housing production plan, but before I reached out to Serpid to find out. You know, cost and timing and that sort of thing. I wanted to get a sense from everybody here and perhaps from Nate Darling as well, if that would be beneficial. But it'll be four years old before we know it, so.
What is it, Barbara? When you say housing production plan, is that in regards?
So I'm also going to forward you the housing production plan. The housing production plan, just for the for the public, is is a plan which we, if we remain in compliance with it, it. Sort of protects us from the 40B developments because. That's the safe harbor term, and one time we were in compliance, we were at our 7%, at least, that's my recollection. I don't know where we are today, and some things have changed, so I just feel like with all the building permits having been issued. And all the new things that have been done, it would be appropriate to have that updated, and I suspect it will take a few months to do it. So if we want something done this year, I think we need to get on the list.
That sounds good to me.
So is that a responsibility of the planning board, or is that a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen and? Other boards are just as active citizens that want to help with the process?
So this, this would actually be done by Serpid, and there will be a cost to us, so what I, what I'd like to do is just get your permission, if people are interested in having it done, if this board. Thinks it's valuable, then I'll at least get an estimate from Serpid and pursue the timeline and what's going to be involved. So that we can present that to Board of Selectmen for their consideration.
I think it's important. I think we should definitely know where we stand. We've had so much development, even in this past year. I mean, Nate talks about how how many more, you know. Permits, you know, have been requested in the past year, and and then with all the, you know, the.
Are they able to give us a hard cost?
Yeah. I was hoping Jeff would give me a ballpark, but he outsourced, he sends me off to the next person, so they're going to probably get back to me tomorrow. But when I realized that it wasn't just a quick thing, I thought I should check with you guys before I continued with pricing. I don't want to waste their time. You know?
Yeah, and I just think that if you're trying to. Pitch this to the Board of Selectmen who's doing the budget stuff, they're going to want probably a pretty hard number on it, so I just wanted to see that that's an option.
So it is worthwhile to go ahead and have them finish up giving us the estimate. Okay, fine. That's great.
Yeah, it doesn't cost anything to get the estimate, but I just wanted to make sure it wasn't this loosey-goosey estimate with a bunch of hourly rate stuff at the end of it, you know?
Exactly, exactly, and that's it. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't make the motion. I offered to somebody else to make.
Michelle made the motion.
I thought she seconded.
Oh.
I just said second.
So, all right, so. I'm, when I say this, you say so moved. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion.
All right, I have two motions to adjourn. Would anybody like to second one of them? All right, Michelle seconded Jack and Barbara's motion to adjourn, so I have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and we will see you at least next week.